Good evening. The North Las Vegas City Council welcomes you our meeting today. There are two public forums set aside for public comment. One at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end of the meeting. If you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards which is located in the table outside the main entrance where you entered or at the podium rail to my left. Please give the card to the acting city clerk. She sits right here in front of me to my left. Could you raise your hand? There she is, right there. And when I call upon you to speak, I request that you limit your comments to more than three minutes and we avoid any repetition. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with Nevada Open Meeting Law?
Yes, we are compliant.
Wonderful. Tonight we have the opportunity to have an invocation given by a wonderful man Reverend John Capreen from Summit Ridge Church. It's a Christian church in our community. Following that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem Richard Churchill. Please rise.
Let's pray. Gracious Lord, it's a privilege to be able to call upon you to begin our time. You are Creator, you know it all, and Lord, we ask for wisdom that will benefit the city. Lord, would you bless this city? Thank you for your hand upon it and that you care about every detail and for even this meeting and for the council members. Lord, we pray for unity and for patience. And, Lord, what seems so irregular today as all around is to hear one another. And so, Lord, we pray for that unity and your work and just a humbleness amongst one another, and we thank you for the fact that you care about this very meeting and the very important things that will be talked about. And so, Lord, we pray for peace for this city. We ask that you, by your grace, will give your hope and grace to this time and to the city. And it is in your name I pray. Amen.
Please join us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, John, and thank you for coming and blessing this meeting this afternoon. We appreciate you. Tonight, we have the opportunity to present a proclamation recognizing one of our very own, Nino Galloway, for receiving the St. Jude Hope Award. Nino's in the audience right now. We're going to go down the front and say wonderful, nice things about him. Nino, come down. We're going to meet you down there.
A friend over here, all right? I could tell you that we, as a city council, as a city in general, have probably the most proactive, nicest employees over here that get involved on their own time to do very, very good things for our community. And I just want to take a moment to recognize one of these outstanding firefighters over here, Mr. Nino Galloway. He will be receiving a prestigious award this weekend from St. Jude for all of his hard work in volunteering in the community. His work and dedication to the community, both on and off the clock, are perfect examples of what it means to be part of the North Las Vegas team. And I would like to read the proclamation now, if you don't mind, please, honoring his efforts. Oh, we've got a whole bunch of whereas. All right. Whereas, Nino Galloway has been a North Las Vegas firefighter for nearly three decades. Joining the North Las Vegas Fire Department in 1993. And whereas, throughout his career, Nino has been heavily involved in the community, both here in North Las Vegas and around Clark County. And whereas, much of Nino's community service is dedicated to youth through organizing back-to-school drives, holiday toy drives, and other outreach efforts through his work with Firefighters of Southern Nevada Burn Foundation and various other charitable organizations. And whereas, Nino's efforts have made an impact in the lives of countless residents in North Las Vegas and beyond, leading him to be the recipient of this year's St. Look at that. You hear that? This year's St. Jude Award, We Stop Award Lifetime Service. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of North Las Vegas, do hereby honor Mr. Nino Galloway and ask all of our citizens to help us recognizing his efforts to the community and congratulate him for receiving this prestigious community award. And of course, it's signed by all of us on council, the mayor and all floor council members. Thank you, Mr. Galloway. Well deserved.
I actually don't know. That's the secret sauce of it all. Just go to work, right? Especially now. So ultimately, the secret to living is giving. And with some of the stuff that police fire and other first responders see on a normal basis, I think one of the keys to life and joy is to at least put back in the community where much is given, much is expected. So our job is to be servants. And so, there's no guidelines, so we just go to work. Outside of that, I don't know. That's how I got.
I know this, I've heard before, service is a rent we pay for the time we're on here on earth if we're living a good life. And obviously, you're being recognized for a life well spent in service. And we're very proud of you representing our city and letting the world know out there that men and women in North Las Vegas are service-minded, especially our fire department and our police department, like you mentioned. So I'm very appreciative of you and the leadership you're showing. I know a lot of people throughout the region do this, but you obviously were the one that chose this year for your generative leadership. So thank you, Nino, for making sure North Las Vegas looks as special as it is.
He says he doesn't know how he won it. Of course, you wouldn't know because you're a humble person, you know? You define, you know, I mean, if there was also like a proclamation also for humility, it'd be on there too. That's just it, you know, a humble person, you never seek, you know, you never seek going out and everything. You're just at every event and you inspire other people to get in. So how did you get it? Humility and by inspiring others. Congratulations. It's very well deserved.
Agreed, and your inspiration to others and what you give back to those around you, it's nice when you go places. I think you're a household name. Everyone knows who you are, and the great thing is, you're ours. So we claim you, we're not sharing you, but we want you to continue with the work. So congratulations, this is so well deserved.
Thank you. I just really admire Nino for his can-do attitude and his upbeat outlook on things. He's just a real positive voice for our community. And I was out here at a COVID testing event on a Saturday, and we were having a conversation, and then he saw some smoke in the south and literally dropped what he's doing and shifted into work mode and took off. And so, he's committed to his craft in the fire services as well. So he does it all.
That was very nice. Moving on to Council items, Councilman Barone.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, you know, it's actually an honor to be an elected official here in a city with such fantastic public servants, you know, like everybody, I think, in our fire services, our police services, and all over the rest of our services. Mayor, I guess everyone has seen on the way in that there's preparations here for an event that we're going to be having here very soon. It's Mexican Independence tonight, and this is going to be the kickoff, the official kickoff to Hispanic Heritage here in the month with the official Grito de Dolores. That's going to start here from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Liberty Park. We'll have live entertainment, there'll be community resources, free food, and some interactive booths. I'm really excited for everyone here who's going to join us. Again, this is the second time we've done this, but we started one last year. And let's see here, we're going to have a very special guest. For anyone, especially the, maybe not the young people, but slightly, well, people my age, I think, will remember Rosa Gloria Chagoyan. She was Mexico's first female action hero star known as Lola La Trailera. She'll be here to actually present and to sing a little bit, and we have another singer after that. But the big thing is, we're actually going to be using our Liberty Bell. We've gotten some wheels put on it, and we're going to roll it out, and it will be definitely ringing for liberty there at Liberty Park. And I'd just like to take a moment here to thank all of our sponsors. Fiesta 98.1 FM, Buscando Estrellas, our good friend, Jeanette Reveré, Agora Realty and Management, Alliance Insurance Solutions, Kano Health, Ero Mexico, and Viva Zapatas Mexican Restaurant, and one very generous owner who want to remain totally anonymous. Thank you very much. And once again, I hope you all enjoy, you join us outside this afternoon, and facilities start a little bit after 5:00 and run through 8:00 p.m. Thank you very much. Oh, I forgot one last thing. Mayor, we're starting a new award. We're starting some fantastic awards for people, there'll be a leadership award for a person who's provided almost like incredible leadership in the community. But we're also going to recognize the core, the very strength of the Hispanic community, and that's the family. So we're choosing one family, no one really knows who they are, but they've left a mark in our city and I think in our society. And finally, you know, here in North Las Vegas, we're all about business, right? We move at the speed of business. Hey, if you want to get a business started, you started here. So we're going to recognize an exemplary Hispanic business. They're actually leaders in the field, and they did it through hard work, and I'm very proud to say it is a North Las Vegas business.
Congratulations. We're going to be interested to see who that is. Mayor Pro Tem Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just mention once again, I do this at every council meeting. On October 16th, which is a Saturday, from approximately 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Craig Ranch Regional Park, nonprofit that I have together with Ms. Laura Coleman, we put on an event over there honoring our veteran military and first responders. It's open and free to the public. The entertainment this year is really amazing. We missed last year because of COVID, but we're making up for it this year. So if you don't mind, mark your calendars. You can go online and look at our website. It's events for, number four, NOVeventsformilitary.org. I'm sorry. Also, on October 23rd, from 9:00 to 11:00 in Nature Discovery Park off of Aliante Park, we're just out to the 215, we're doing our annual PAWS, P-A-W-S, PAWS, in the park for all of our little doggies, and we're going to have a contest. So, you know, make sure you bring out your dog. If you don't have a dog, they have plenty of them at the Animal Foundation, so you could adopt one. There's plenty of animals there to be adopted. Bring them, and then we have sponsors and we'll have prizes, and we're going to have a good time over there. Thirdly, once again, our annual, although we missed last year because of COVID, but we're going to be having our Bingo with the Seniors at Skyview YMCA on Saturday, November 6th, from 10:00 to 11:30. So if you're a senior and you would like to come up there and win bingo and have some breakfast with us up there and enjoy the morning, you know, please do so. And lastly, I want to say something over here. I don't think anybody is unaware at this point of the 20th anniversary of 9/11. We've been watching so many things on television and hearing about it in the news, but I had the opportunity to go to Station 5 on the 11th and to be present for the ringing of the bell. That day, 20 years ago, 343 firefighters, not counting police and other service members, died in that collapse of those two towers. And one of our residents who lives here now in Aliante, Mr. Frank Bizarro, was a firefighter at Ground Zero. He was one of the teams that worked the fire over there afterwards, looking for survivors, which of course there weren't any, unfortunately. So, you know, most of those people did that for about six to eight months, and because of inhaling all of that toxic smoke and everything, he was one of very many who had to retire because of a medical. And those 343 firefighters who passed away, the saddest thing is that when they were going through the, what they called the pile, we would call it a rubble, they didn't find anybody. But under all of that rubble, under all of that pile, the only thing they heard for days was either cell phones going off, family members trying to reach their spouses or their loved ones, or radios going off from fire and police underneath all of that rubble. And whenever they found the remains of a firefighter or police officer, they all stopped what they were doing, and the specific station came down there, full of firefighters, and they stood at attention as they carried out the remains of that person. Now, since then, more, much more than 343 people passed away with, you know, effects of that day to smoke and everything. But it's very ironic because this past Monday, I had the privilege of going to what we call the SOA Awards, which is Safety Honor Awards and Recognition for our First Responders at Las Vegas City Hall. And we had six firefighters to be recognized that day, and only two showed up. And the reason why two showed up was because of their service, once again. That was the same morning when I left my home, I saw the smoke coming from public services, and they had to respond to a recycling plant fire over there. So, you know, this is what these people do on a day-in, day-out basis, and sometimes we don't recognize the danger involved with it. So it wasn't just 20 years ago, we're talking about it now, but here again, just this past Monday, they put their lives in jeopardy. So I'm just going to read the names of our firefighters who were given this honor for their service this past Monday. It's Captain Gary Polk, and they're all from Engine 51. Engineer Joshua Hammond, firefighter paramedic Jordan Spears, firefighter Cole Halliday, firefighter paramedic David Zimmerman, and firefighter Ryan Simone. Thank you, Mayor.
Fantastic report. Thank you for participating in those. Councilman Black.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. My family and I have enjoyed the trails and parks all throughout North Las Vegas for many years, and so as a councilman, I've really enjoyed having a park, community park cleanup at various parks in Ward 3. Now that the weather will be tapering off, I have put on the calendar my next community park cleanup on November 13th. Details will be forthcoming, but if you would like to participate and help out, give back to the community, and have some fun at the park with your family, please put that on your calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Gorenz-Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. On Monday, I think I had one of the most exciting and innovative tours that I've had in a long time, and it was the Choice STEM Innovation Center that North Las Vegas is launching at Nevada Partners. And it's a state-of-the-art training facility. Students will be able to do lots of simulations in auto mechanics, cooking. The welding simulation was about the coolest one because you did everything except no sparks were flying, but you were actually able to weld a straight line and get a score on how you did, the correct temperature, just everything you can imagine, even had on the correct gear for welding. There's also 3D printing going on, fuse filament fabrication. Students will learn about solar panels and all the aspects of installing and making solar panels, cooking, and then the hydroponics will also be extremely useful for that particular facility and the surrounding area because it's such a food desert. So you can grow, you know, fresh produce and other items right there in-house, and then it's just amazing the work that the students will be able to do in this great state-of-the-art facility. So go North Las Vegas.
Thank you very much, Council, for those reports. We're going to move now on to public forum. This is a time set aside for public comment on posted agenda items. This public forum excludes discussion on public hearing items, which will be heard later and separately. So if you want to speak on any items listed under the Consent Agenda, Business, or Ordinance Final Action, now is that time. Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards posted for any of these, any blue cards for these posted agenda items? No, you're okay? All right. Thank you very much. We will close the public forum. Moving on to the agenda.
Mayor and council staff recommends approval of the agendas published with only a clarification on Resolution 2676. This resolution was published in the Review Journal for signing of the lease. However, we're moving forward today with the resolution only, and the lease will appear on the October 6, 2020 agenda.
Okay, thank you. So, Council, any comments or questions? If not, the chair will take a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to Consent Agenda.
Mayor and council, the consent agenda consists of items number 2 through 11. It's our recommendation to approve it as published.
Thank you very much. Council, any comments or questions on the consent agenda? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move for approval of the consent agenda.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to Public Works.
Mayor, council, item.
Public hearings, pardon me. I almost scared my manager there. Moving on to public hearings.
Item 12, approve VA CO-9 2021 Tropical and Christie Industrial Park for applicant CRM LLC to vacate a public right-of-way on Reese Lane between Castleberry Lane and Christie Lane.
Thank you very much. We have a presentation here. Name it for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. My name is Tony Sless. I address 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. Here on behalf of the applicant, we appreciate staff's review of this. We are just, if I can show you on the overhead precisely where we're seeking to vacate. It is, the site's highlighted in yellow. Reese Lane runs right through the middle of the site to the east. Reese Lane's already been vacated. It obviously terminates at the 15. Just by way of background, you saw this.
Would you give us those other streets right there? That street right there?
This is Castleberry.
Right.
And this is Christie, and this is Tropical, and then the I-15.
There you go. So it's right in that little area. Okay.
Exactly. And just by way of background, a few months back, the council did approve an amendment to the master plan and zone change for industrial. Simply, we kind of put this in the bin of housekeeping and just assembling the parcels for future development.
Thank you. That's pretty cut and dry, Tony. Is there anybody, I'm going to open a public comment right now. Is there anybody from the public here that'd like to discuss this item with the council? And we have no blue cards for this, so we'll close the public hearing. No one's coming forth. I'm going to open this up to the council. Councilman Barone.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. No, actually, I don't have any questions. I'd just point out, actually, I agree with staff very much on this one. What it does is it actually makes a nice-sized parcel for a pretty good project to bring in some pretty decent employment. Mayor, as you predicted before, we've got some services in that area, we've turned some land into some valuable real estate, and assembling it together is going to be pretty good here for the community, and definitely they'll be providing more employment for us. Thank you very much. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve it.
Any other comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion. Councilman Barone, please cast your vote. Items approved. Good job, Tony.
Yes, have a great evening.
Mayor and council, item 13, approve ZO-801 2021 and pass and adopt ordinance number 3090, amending Title 17 of municipal code related to zoning, ZO-801 2021, apex landscape requirements by amending requirements within industrial apex-related district and providing further matters property related there too.
Thank you. Concerning the apex landscaping requirements, is there anybody here today that'd like to testify on this or voice our opinion? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. Councilman Barone.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Council, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to business.
Item number 14, approve subaward to the Nevada System of Higher Education Board of Regents on behalf of the University of Nevada, Las Vegas, funded by the American Rescue Plan State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund in the total amount of $458,660 to establish and administer a Small Business Development and Support Center on the first floor of City Hall.
Would you expand on that just a little bit?
Yeah, it's rich.
What you see is happening here? This is creative, and this is innovative.
Yeah, this is great. That's why I want to make sure I don't take all of Rich's credit, stolen valor.
This could be passed real quickly, and no one knows what you've been able to accomplish.
Sure. Hi, everybody. Rich Easter, Director of Grants Development Administration, City of North Las Vegas, for the record. Exactly what Mayor was saying, this is really innovative and something that we're really excited about. So the need for business assistance, and specifically small business assistance and disadvantaged business assistance in both the city of North Las Vegas and across the country, has been evident before COVID, but was really exacerbated during the pandemic. And so, we, as part of our larger plan for an equitable and resilient recovery, are looking at ways to support our small business community, specifically in the city. This is part of a larger strategy that we are going to put together, but it's a really important one. And so, we think that the geographic location and the availability, the proximity really, of all the different business resources that we have here in City Hall positions us really uniquely to create something that's first of the kind in the valley. What's going to happen is this specific subaward here to UNLV's Small Business Development Center, we are going to have a satellite office of that Small Business Development Center right here next to council chambers. It'll be staffed by two full-time staff members of UNLV and two interns in their business program, which is going to be really exciting because there's an educational component as well. Businesses will be able to come in and get a whole suite of resources and support. So for existing businesses, that will look like support for all the different federal grant opportunities that are coming down to help support business, you know, helping them write those applications. Businesses that either need to pivot to something new because of the effects of the pandemic or are ready to expand into a new space, they'll be able to get walked through those processes. We'll have business planning right here and business permitting so they can help with those processes. Obviously, the Secretary of State is in the building too. For new businesses, those that have been laid off and now are trying to start something new, take something maybe from their kitchen and start a new food truck, they'll be able to actually walk them through every step of the way and kind of hold their hand to create new and vibrant businesses in North Las Vegas. So it's part of a larger approach. There's another agenda item. The next one is for access, the revolving loan fund. And we're essentially creating an entire ecosystem down here on the first floor of City Hall to really help make sure these businesses can survive and thrive through the recovery.
So when it comes to labor, can you expand on that just a little bit more? If people in our community are desiring to get employed, how will they work with this? I know that the library director's here, and he has computers, and we can go out and get, you know, a lot of information about jobs are here, but how do you see this opening for us?
That's a great question. So there's three sections, right? So we've got this agenda item here creates the Small Business Development Center. The next item creates a revolving loan fund to actually capitalize and provide capital to small businesses that historically have not been able to access those dollars. And the third piece is a partnership with Workforce Connections. That's the resolution for the lease that we're going to, that will officially be heard on the October 6 meeting. The, that third piece, the Workforce Connections piece, is really all about labor. So we currently partner with them at our one-stop career centers in the libraries. That's where job seekers go in and can get assistance refining their resumes, upping their skills, getting connected to workforce training. Now, through what we're going to be having downstairs, the Employee and V-Hub, that will allow businesses to come directly in that are looking for workforce. We know, you know, you can walk around and see Help Wanted signs on almost every business anywhere you go across all sectors right now. Businesses are going to be able to come into the Employee and V-Hub, and they're going to be connected directly with a pipeline of workers, and there's going to be federal incentives for hiring those workers so that businesses will kind of get the benefit not only of the bodies and a talented work pool, but also financial benefits. but also financial benefits to provide on-the-job training, uh, and incentives for hiring those people. So, it's really a fully comprehensive, um, plan that's gonna help not only the businesses themselves, but also the workforce and those seeking employment.
Can I take a few questions? I mean, for myself, real quick. So if I'm a new business coming to town, I'm manufacturing something, and I come in and I work with Mark and I work with everybody, and I get this, and I say, now, I need to hire twenty people. Workforce Connections, or somebody that walks in the door could say, I'm looking for a job. I'm tired of being in this industry. I'd like to come over here, and you're gonna gather them up and introduce them, and we're gonna try to get these people into those jobs.
Correct.
Okay. Um, any, any, Counselmember Ong?
Yeah, Mayor, you know, it, it, I, I'm really happy. Um, I, uh, I think you yourself came in one time, because we, we used, I, I see this as an outgrowth of some, of initiatives that we had before. The North Las Vegas Small Business Academy, which, you know, of course, we ran kind of like in a shoestring thing. We had some partners from the community who came in. And I remember you came in, you were wearing your biker shorts that, that one time, you and your, I think, was it your brother-in-law? Or no, your, your, your son-in-law, you guys came in, and we had, it was, it was standing room only. It, of course, before the COVID, uh, the COVID, uh, disaster going on here, before the time of social distancing. But it was standing room only here. There is a great need for leadership, I think, here for, for municipal, for municipality show leadership, and actually assist and bring business to them. From, from those, uh, I think we had, we wound up having, I think, three or four sessions. And from those, we actually have, you know, North Las Vegas residents who opened up businesses in Clark County and in Vegas. Powerless Flowers, who have been, you know, they've, they've actually been very generous with us here in the past. We've also had, you know, uh, new businesses that have started here in North Las Vegas. So I, I'm, I, I'm very happy to say, I'm extremely excited, and we're putting muscle behind this now. We're putting some, some real, uh, some real resources behind this. I'm extremely excited. And so, uh, I think that's very necessary. I'm so happy that we have Mr. Easter on board here with the staff to really take the ball, he taking the hand, he, we're giving him the, the ball to hand off, and he's gonna charge through there like, uh, like a, like a, a head of steam fullback. Of course, NFL started yesterday, so I have to use that, uh, that, that metaphor. But I'm extremely excited. I just, uh, uh, wanna make sure that, uh, we, we, we make sure that we, we keep, uh, all of our services very Latino-friendly, very, you know, personal color-friendly, and bilingual interns and whatever we can do to, to make sure that we have that. I, I think when we are, we market it here to our, uh, to our residents and in the, in the Latino, uh, community in general, we are, this will be seen as a mecca. This building is gonna be seen as something where people come all the time, not just to pay the water bills, but to actually come here and start an entire new way of life. And I am extremely excited, Mayor. Uh, I, and by the way, the word's already gotten out, because I was at a reception last night with, uh, with our, our good friend here, Olivia Diaz, and people actually came up to me, hey, hey, I heard what you guys are starting, that, the business thing. They stole our ideas. Yes, aren't you, aren't you really, really happy? And they were. People, uh, people are excited. And as soon as word gets out, I, I, I think again, we, we've been seen as leaders here for, for, for mid businesses and large businesses, but I think we're gonna be seen leaders for the kind of businesses that grow our community, that's small businesses. Thank you so very much.
Okay, um, any other, I just, can I take just another second? You guys on this one? So, I guess, um, how do you get the info out? Say I'm coming here from another city, out of state, or I'm coming from somewhere else, and, and I'm just gonna move there, my folks are moving here, and I'm, I'm gonna come, and I don't know where to go. Um, how do we connect those new residents to this project? Is there a way to do that, or do we have to wait until they get a water bill, and we know they're here?
No, no, that's a great question. So, we're making a real investment in this, and like, uh, Councilman Ong was saying, we're hitting it full steam. And so part of that is gonna be a really robust marketing campaign. Uh, and that's gonna be spread across North Las Vegas, and it's gonna target existing businesses. It's gonna target, we're gonna use all kinds of different, um, mechanisms, and you know, Patrick Walker can talk more about that. But we've got a really, really huge, not just the initial burst, right? So we're gonna go beyond just the, the ribbon cutting, which will be there, and that'll be great, and it'll be a good photo op. But it's gonna be a sustained marketing plan that's gonna run us through, um, you know, this entire year and into the next to make sure that people know about us, uh, and they're utilizing the services that we set up.
So if I'm an existing manufacturing company here, and I'm wanting to raise, we can let those businesses know somehow that we now have a job connect in North Las Vegas.
Absolutely.
And they can call and say, I need five people.
Yeah, we've got our business newsletter that we send out regularly, and so it's gonna be really primarily featured there. There's gonna be a new page on the website dedicated just to the business connector downstairs. Um, and I just know our comms team is gonna blow it out of the water to make sure that it gets all the, makes the impact and gets the attention it deserves.
Okay. Say, let's say I, I wanna be a substitute school teacher, or I wanna be a school teacher or something, and it has nothing to do with actually maybe North Las Vegas in general, but it's a bigger question. Do they get referred to us, or do we pass those informations on to other people? Or you work those requests for some unique things that may be not in our community?
Sure. So for the job seekers, those partnerships already exist with Workforce Connections through the one-stop career shops, uh, at the library. So tho- those, those pieces are in place, that infrastructure's there, and we can start that immediately, and have been doing it for a while.
Okay. Can somebody who works in Henderson come over here and say, I think we're moving north Las Vegas soon, I wanna know what's going on? I guess what I'm trying to say is, if people, anybody can walk in here and, and be served by this facility, is that correct?
Yeah, absolutely. And what's gonna give us a competitive advantage, first, we have the, the geography, right? Because where we're located, but more importantly, we're gonna have our economic development team right upstairs with an open line of communication to all of these centers and all of these pieces, so that when someone walks in and either wants to relocate or start a new business, we're gonna make sure they have the, the materials and the people in front of them to say, let me tell you why North Las Vegas is the place you wanna start this new business. And that's gonna give us a really great competitive advantage.
Yeah, because we're gonna have thousands of jobs here, you know, and it, and it just won't be our residents, you know, so.
Yes, sir.
Well, I have a question. Ms. Wenz, around?
Um, just out of curiosity, with so many vacant, I don't know how many vacant, but I'm just saying, like, in shopping centers or strip malls, so could there be conversations with landlords to lease out space in, in their complexes? And can that be part of those discussions if people wanna move into an office or brick-and-mortar type instead of like some mobile thing or something like that?
Yeah, absolutely. So the, the professionals, the subject matter experts that we're gonna be bringing in to staff this center full-time, those are the connections that they have, and that's their area of expertise. So we're gonna have people just dedicated to doing that exact type of work.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, Rich, that's a great presentation.
Thank you.
So we now, we need to get a motion. Uh, did you have a question, sir?
I, I'm just asking him to stay in case there's any questions on the next two items.
Is there any other questions for Rich or City Manager? Seeing none, thank you very much. Good presentation. So now the Chair will take a motion to approve the sub award access community development financial institution.
Mayor, I, I, I think, uh, my earlier comment probably served a, as an endorsement. Uh, so that's, I'll make it efficient, and I'd like to make a motion, uh, to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved unanimously. Rich?
Item number fifteen, approve sub award to access community development financial institution, C D F I, funding by the American Rescue Plan State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund in the total amount of two million, one hundred and one thousand, eight hundred dollars to establish and administer the revolving loan fund to provide capital to North Las Vegas small businesses.
Counselor, any comments or questions? If not, the Chair will take a motion.
Make motion to approve this as well.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item number sixteen, pass and adopt resolution number two six seven five, expressing city council's intent to lease eighty-four square feet of office and window space located on the first floor of North Las Vegas City Hall to Workforce Connections pursuant to N R S two six eight dot zero six four.
Counselor, uh, Counselor, Counselor, any comments or questions? If not, the Chair will take a motion to pass and adopt this resolution.
Um, Mayor, I, I think Workforce Connections will be a fantastic addition to this, uh, to this building. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item number seventeen, pass and adopt resolution number two six seven six, expressing the intent to lease four hundred and fifty-five square feet of office space located on the first floor of North Las Vegas City Hall to the Nevada System of Higher Education, Board of Regents on behalf of the University of Nevada, Las Vegas, pursuant to N R S two six eight dot zero six four.
Thank you very much. Counselor, any comments, questions, uh, comments or questions? If not, the Chair will take motion to pass and adopt this resolution also.
Let's make motion to approve this one as well.
Items approved. Mr. City Manager, if you can do this as well as I think it can be done, this is a great asset for our community. And I, I don't know, do you have any thoughts on this, or?
Yeah, I mean, this-
It took a lot of work to get to this point, I can tell you, this many organizations.
Yeah, and I'd say this is also just the, the tip of the iceberg. We're not ready to release some of the other stuff that we're working on. But just think of it as a continuation of, uh, the approach that we had to CARES Act, which is, there was a recognition by, by this body that we needed to take those federal dollars and we needed to shore up and reinvest in businesses. And that really flows from the idea that we spent a lot of time and effort and energy attracting businesses to the city of North Las Vegas. And so, the last thing we wanted to do is let, uh, let the pandemic wipe out existing businesses, um, or businesses that we had attracted, new businesses. So, if you take all the different things that we learned, um, during the pandemic as we were reaching out to businesses, identifying their needs, understanding how there's such disconnect between them and, uh, state and federal resources, and recognizing our ability through various means to, to reach out to businesses, it's taking that information, it's taking the, the drive and commitment to make sure that we're, we're reinvesting, um, back in our businesses, which is essentially just shoring up our tax base. Um, that's essentially the, the premises behind what I think's a very innovative, uh, program. And I think once it's all in its, its totality, um, put out there, you're going to see an interconnection that is not just innovative, it's groundbreaking, it's not done anywhere else. But it's truly, if any biz, any business out there in North Las Vegas after the entire program is in place will recognize that this is a, a wonderful example of government working, uh, for them to make sure that they're successful, recognizing the value that they have in our community and not just supporting our tax base in order for us to provide programs for residents, but also in providing jobs for our residents and making sure that we actually are what council envisions as far as the live, play, work community.
We are definitely business partners to the people who do business in this community, and this proves it. And the other thing is, we are doing our best to diversify the incomes of the families in North Las Vegas with these new jobs that are coming. We really want anybody that's qualified to have these jobs, if we get North Las Vegas residents out of gaming, tourism, hospitality exclusively in a family into these jobs, we're solidifying their futures. So, I think it's great work going on, Counsel, with what we're doing here, and with the directors and all the things that they're doing to help us strengthen our city and, and our families. So thank you very much, Directors, too.
Thank you, Mayor. And also, I mean, without Director Easter's leadership on this, I mean, he's been tremendous in his understanding of, of how to put this together, um, not just from his, his experience with, with grants and things like that, but just in, in his vision and making sure that he's, he's properly operationalizing, um, you, you, the direction from, from this body.
You know, I'll make just one comment here. We've done some great things here. I think, Rich, um, Director Easter, you need, would you please go to each director, each city council personnel and explain this, so we can explain it to all our wards? Okay, I mean, this is great, we pass it, but we're the greatest salesman for our city. So a, a tutorial from you would be very, very beneficial to this program, okay? Thanks very much. Moving on.
Item number eighteen, review and dis, right, yeah, review and discuss, in discussion of COVID-nineteen vaccination leave for City of North Las Vegas, uh, employees. Mayor and Council, this was a, a policy, as you all know, that we put in place a week ago. And essentially, we, we looked at, um, we were continually getting questions from the media. We were getting questions from employees and employee groups on what our intent, uh, to do when it came to vaccines. It was something that was repeatedly talked about and discussed on the calls that Councilman Black and I are on, on the region. And we decided to, to take a decidedly care, what I call a cared approach. Um, and while there is some stick approaches out there, as far as, you know, you're vaccinated or you're going to, to get tested, we didn't feel that that was, uh, something that made a lot of sense, uh, considering the fact that, um, both vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals can be carriers if they desire to make sure that we're spotting COVID so that it's not in the workplace. Um, and so we were looking for what we would call a cared approach. And the policy that, that we, uh, put in place was kind of twofold. Is first of all, if you have, um, received, uh, vaccination, that if you take that information to H R, which provides a valuable service to us, because we don't really know who's vaccinated and who's not vaccinated, other than those employees that we vaccinated ourselves or that the, the Fire Department vaccinated at our vaccination clinics, we don't really have any idea. So, for example, uh, up to today, we've had two hundred and seventy-eight employees that have turned in, um, their vaccination information to H R, and that's gonna continue. We've had, you know, we, we get a steady amount, uh, all the time. For those individuals that turn in their vaccination, then we provide them one day of annual leave as, as the carrot, if you will. Um, for those that have not yet been vaccinated, uh, we, we provide, um, annual leave hours, uh, for each time they get, for each of the two vaccinations to hope to incentivize them to get the vaccination. Um, we also have a policy, and this is something that, um, Craig Romi with I A F F, uh, approached us about and discussed with us as far as if you have an, an employee who has been vaccinated, and then they contract, um, COVID, so it's the breakthrough case, then if they are then in quarantine, then they would be, there would be a spe, there's a special bank that's created so that that, they're using, um, those hours in that COVID, uh, bank for the time that they're in quarantine. If you're an employee that has, has chosen, um, not to be vaccinated, then if you're to, to, if you contract COVID and to go into quarantine, you will then use your own banks. Um, once again, that's, that's the, the cared approach. Um, it's, I know that, that, uh, many of you in conversations have received, individual briefings I've had with you have received, um, either phone calls or emails from employees. So it is that, it, it's the nature of any policy we, we put out there, um, and wanted to bring it to you all to see if there's any thoughts, uh, that you have on, on where we're going. Our intent is, is to, to take any information that we receive, uh, this evening and work with H R and legal to see if we can put it into the policy. Um, it would not be coming back to council, but we just wanted to get your all's thoughts on it, or just have a conversation on it.
I'm gonna ask Sally to come up just for a second, because there's some technical questions. Sally, from our H R department, she's our director, would you please come up for a second? And the, the City Manager has a wide breadth of knowledge about things, but you're the expert. So, I'm gonna ask Scott Black, Councilman Black, who's on the Health Department, real quick, if he'd start off. You worked on this just a little bit, is that correct?
I, I think, um, taking this, this, uh, opt-in incentive-based approach, um, gives us the, the coverage we need from a, a employee-based standpoint. People can make their own decisions, and then there are some elements that will be different depending on the decision that they make. And so I, I think that this approach is, is very sound. I think it will ultimately drive up our, uh, vaccination percentages. You know, it's just a number, but really, at the end of the day, what we're focusing on is maintaining the health and safety of our employees and also those that they interact with, and of course, the families that they go home to at night. And so, I think if, if that's the driver and the, the kind of the, the baseline of our policy, and it's fair, and people can still make their own decisions, and I think it's very sound. So, I, I, I think it's, as presented today, uh, makes a lot of logical and practical, um, sense to me, so.
I have a few questions, but I'd rather ask Counselor. You, can I, you, I just, so, I'll just take this for a minute, all right?
Sure, Mayor.
Sally, appreciate you.
Sally, I just, for the record.
So, people who have been vaccinated at the city, obviously, there's a record of that. But, um, first off, is that record private? And number two is, can people who have been vaccinated in other places approach you and get on that list? How, how do you foresee that working? And the City Manager can jump in any whenever he wants to on this too.
So, employees who have been vaccinated, they would just need to, um, provide their vaccination card, uh, a copy of it to H R. You know, H R handles, um, benefits for the city. So, um, we're used to handling confidential information, like HIPAA, that have, that apply to HIPAA laws, all those things. So, what they would do is email or, um, and we had given in the notification to employees an email to send to our team, and it's held confidential in H R.
So it is confidential, and they can't approach you-
Yes.
-with their card. Okay, that's good to know. Do you have any other questions, anybody here? I have a few more, if you wouldn't mind. There, I know people- There, I know people who have certain little, they say they have health disorders. I don't know what those health disorders are. They just tell me that their health won't allow this. And I've heard there are some religious exemptions that could be made available for certain faiths. I mean, example, in the Seventh Day Adventists, don't want blood transfusions, you know, maybe there's a, a faith that would come out and say this isn't what they want. What about an exemption for those? How would those work? Mr. City Manager or Sally, how would that work?
Do you want me to take it?
Either.
Okay. No, those are good questions. Those are things that have been brought up by some employees and the, you know, one of the concerns that, that we have in by not providing an exemption, as this has come to light, is that it, it could create potential liabilities for the city. The reality is, is some, some people might, see, Councilman Brown's already partying. It's not till like 5:00 that I think the party starts. You know, you broke Councilman Black's heart because he thought that was his birthday party celebration out there, not, not what it is. I, I think that the, the concern being is if you have a desire to take the vaccination, but you have a doctor that has advised you against it, that you, that's something that we, we need to look at recognizing. We've been looking at case-by-case as employees contact us. Clearly, the intent of this policy is to incentivize vaccinations, so any watering down of it is, is a concern, but we still have to make sure that, that we're protecting the city. So those are, those, those are very good questions and something that, that we are looking, looking at.
This may be for the City Attorney. Michaela, ADA requirements. Some people possibly shouldn't maybe take any type of vaccination or something, you know. What's the thoughts on, on that?
It's the little button on the side, you like flip it? Okay.
Mayor, I think that's what, that's part of the dialogue that employees can have with HR is if there is a concern that they have some sort of medical issue that perhaps their doctor has advised them it's not, it's not safe for you to take this vaccine, then that's something maybe HR can develop some sort of process or dialogue as to how that would work. Would it require some sort of note or some, some verification from their doctor? I think yes, it, it would be on a case-by-case basis if, to make the accommodation.
So Mayor and Counsel, HR does have an interactive process for the ADA. Obviously, the city needs to provide accommodations for employees for a variety of reasons and so that is already set up and the employees can contact us. We go through the interactive process, they would, they would fill out some documents that we require in compliance with the law and we can talk, go through what's called the interactive process with the employee and, and land on what accommodation they need.
Okay. So I guess the exemptions is the question. I, can you just study this just a little bit longer? But yet the Council is directing you of sorts to move forward with, you know, a solution to this. Sally, did you catch the questions and you can work with the City Manager on that?
Absolutely. Yes.
Is that okay? All right. So we're, they'll just take this as a presentation?
Yes, sir.
And then it'll be an administrative policy, I think, when the answer comes back from the Council.
Yes, sir. What I'll do is we'll operationalize what was just discussed and then I'll, I'll revisit individually with you all and briefings as we, as we put it into a policy.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
So we are going to move on, close that discussion. Moving on to ordinances, introduction only.
Mayor, Counsel, item 19, introduce ordinance number 3089, amending Title 15 of the Municipal Code by repealing existing Chapter 15.04 of the Municipal Code by repealing ordinance number 3004 and by adopting the International Building Code 2018 edition and adopting a revised version of the Southern Nevada Amendments to the 2018 International Building Code as amended by North Las Vegas to include requirements regarding single-stall restrooms and providing for other managed property related thereto.
Thank you very much. Moving on to City Manager's report.
Mayor and Counsel, I was just going to discuss a little bit what I covered after Director Easter's comments, so I don't have anything to report other than that. We're excited about the program, we're excited to actually announce all the parts of it and kind of the comprehensive approach that's being taken. So we'll just conclude at that.
Okay. Well, this has been a great meeting, a lot of big things that happened, but it's actually been a quick meeting for the Council today, too. I'm going to move on to public forum and close off the City Manager's report now. This is a time set aside for people to come speak to us on any item you want. It's limited to three minutes. We cannot vote on these items tonight, but we can definitely listen to them and put them under a future agenda. I have one blue card here for Ms. Rosanna Henderson. Please come forward. Nice to have you here this evening.
Thank you so much. It's nice to be here. As stated, my name is Rosanna Henderson. I just recently moved to Nevada this year to Las Vegas. I moved here from Los Angeles. And the purpose for me being here today is about this city, Las Vegas. I noticed how it's growing and thriving and, and people are coming here in droves and I know it even better because when I first came here in early of the year, I was trying to purchase a home, but it seems like I didn't have enough money because every offer I made somebody with more money, you know how that works. So I realized that people are really coming here. And the purpose for my being here, as I said, is about this city, which is now my home. I look, I look at the documentaries about Las Vegas when I, ever I catch one on television so that I can learn more about this city, which I now reside. It is amazing how it has grown and it's continuing to grow and thrive with its humble beginnings. It is certainly a city more, about more than casinos and shows. But there is a dark cloud that hangs over this thriving city and that is its, I don't know if it's a nickname or subtitle, Sin City. This is not meant to be a Bible lesson. I'm not here to be a Bible lesson, even though I teach, I am a teacher, but it does say in the Bible that sin pays off in death. I did read an article on Newsbreak listing the seven worst cities in Nevada. According to that article, it said Las Vegas was the seventh city on that list, which was to my shock. It went on to say that at any time you can find people having sexual intercourse on the street in many different ways. But we know that sin is not attractive. The Bible says we all have sin and fall short of God's glory. One thing, children, families are being, children are being raised here. And I know that there are questions that parents are going to have to face about sin. And so my request, the reason why I am here, and I'll cut this short, is because I sincerely request that if possible, I didn't know if it was the City Council or City Commissioner or who, that the title Sin City be removed and no longer be attached to this thriving city of Las Vegas, Nevada. The reason being to honor God for the sacrifice of His only-begotten Son for the sin of the whole world, and He knew no sins. It is to show care and concern and compassion for children now and generations to come and for the sake of Los Angeles, this beautiful city of bright lights. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was very interesting. We're not known as Sin City, but we are a neighbor to Sin City. We're Heaven City. So anyway, we're the great future of North Las Vegas, great families, great leadership.
They are below us technically.
Yeah.
So that would be, yeah.
Yeah, that's right, our elevation. So anyway, if there's anyone else who would like to come forward at this time to address the City Council, this would be the time. Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.